Everybody, we'll go ahead and get started with our work session. Thanks for being here tonight. First item on today's agenda is a discussion on the Marina fuel tanks. And that will be Drew and Lynn.
I'm just here for the fluff. Drew has all the information.
I thought it was the other way around. First, we're going to start out with this packet here. You guys want to take one and pass it down?
You wanted information, and we got it.
As you're looking through this packet, you're going to see three different quotes for three different sized tanks. As well as three different sized prices.
Might you just move straight to what we determined was the best size to get?
The best size that we basically determined to get was the 10,000. And that's a five and five split. And based off of that, we're looking at a couple of different things. We're looking at growth opportunity, looking at less fuel deliveries, more revenue, supply and demand during holiday seasons. And the other thing that we're also looking at is the it's an all in one unit in which you're having, instead of having two different tanks. Okay? The tank is basically manufactured, brought in, we lift it off, we put it on our slab, concrete slab. We hook up the electric and they bring in fuel. And we're ready to go. The registers are automatically incorporated onto the units. All the piping is incorporated into the unit itself. So there'll be no additional vendor, outside vendors coming in installing any type of piping, electrical, tie down, or even having to hook up individual registers, which are the dispensers. After you look at that packet, I have another one for you. Which is option two. But it's my option one.
I'm ready for it.
Okay?
Now, in case they didn't find it, would you tell them what the price is with EnviroSafe?
Eighty-three and eighty-two, is it? Eighty-three?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-three, seven.
Eighty-five would be for the 10K with EnviroSafe. They're a very reputable company. They've never had a claim against them in 30 years. Now, the other thing is that with my research, that I've found that buying fuel tanks is like buying a fuel car. Or, I mean, buying a car. You know, you're going to get the same quality either out of Mercedes or a Chevy, you know, depends on if you want to go European or American. Okay? This tank is built in Florida. Which is the EnviroShield. EnviroSafe, I'm sorry. Now, the flame shield, which is my pick, is built in Alabama, about an hour from here, up in Atmore. And if you look at the first page there, the 10 gallon, two compartment, flame shield, horizontal tank. It's the same tank that EnviroSafe puts out, the exact same specs for $41.90, $9.85. How's it half the price?
Down home boys.
Is that with accessorized exactly the same as the other?
That's exactly, all except for, there is a secondary page right after that on the price sheet that have additional optional cost. And the first section there, under the 10 gallon compartment, I am, have added two 50-foot reels, which will be encased into an enclosed box that is, has a roll-up ROM door, which is lockable for safety issues and security as well. The EnviroSafe for the A7 basically comes with the two 50-foot reels. Okay? The other added benefit here for this is the epoxy coating, which is $2,800, which is highly recommended for the gas side. We did not, I did not get that quoted on the EnviroSafe, but he did quote me roughly around $5,000. It is one of those things to where you say, do we need a coating or do we not? For longevity of the fuel tank, for the amount of money that's being put out. And I would say for $2,800, you do it. The other item in which they recommended to us, in which EnviroSafe did not offer, was basically it's a, it's a fill-right, push-pull handle, three-quarter stainless pipe that basically runs to the bottom of the tank. Water is heavier than fuel, so therefore you can pump out the water from the bottom of the gas tank. Due to the humidity, especially in this area, you all guys know how bad it is. That's where, one of the things where your longevity comes in. It also benefits you in a way that you do not have to change out your fuel filters as much, your fuel-water separator filters on your registers. So you're saving money there as well down the road. If you look on down, you've got the 8,000 gallon compartment, and then you've got the 4,000. That 4,000, that would have to be two separate tanks. And that quote, and that basically, that quote for 2,000, 2,400 is just over $20,000. So you're almost by the time said and done with a 10,000 gallon tank, you're looking at pretty much the same cost.
Eight thousand.
No, the 4,000. If you had to get two tanks, opposed to one tank.
Correct. You get two here, then you said it.
Yeah, the 8,000 is one tank. Is one tank.
So that would 10,000 be 25% more.
And we're saving money on the delivery of fuel.
Okay?
You see the 10,000?
Right there.
Now.
There it is. There's a little out order. There you go. There's the 10,000.
Your other kicker is that fuel tanker trucks come in a couple of different sizes. You have your 18-wheeler size, in which you can get in a single compartment or either a divided compartment. With this 5,000 gallon, each side, you would have one truck. You could have one truck come, okay, for each side, basically. And the truck is 5,000 gallons, right? When you need more fuel, all you would have to do, instead of getting a small truck to come down, two different small trucks, you basically tell them, I need 2,500 and maybe 1,500. And they can stick that in one truck with a split compartment. Okay? But with the added feature of having five and five, you're looking at, like I told you, growth opportunity down the road, in which Fly Creek, in which, from my understanding, is holding out on putting gas tanks in. So therefore, we'll have that. Okay?
It'll be competitive.
Yes. The, for the diesel side, two guaranteed purchasers, in which one is the Coast Guard Auxiliary boats that assist with the Coast Guard and the Navy. They have two boats. The one boat will do about 350 a week, and the smaller boat will do about 120 a week. So that's just about, that's about 470 gallons. Okay? Alea is also coming in once we have fuel tank and the pump out. They are gas engines, and you're looking at doing roughly around summer season, 1,000 gallons. In the winter season, you're doing 300 gallons.
A week?
No, the summer, for the troopers, yes. You've got 1,000. Those are the numbers that I got from them.
Does this have to be bid? And is there, are these items available on any of our buying alliances?
No buying alliances.
Does it have to be bid? I mean, don't we bid out like police cars that are $30,000, $40,000?
At this price point, absolutely, it would have to be bid. What we're looking for is, you tell us to go get a bid on them.
Which tank?
Well, we're recommending the Alabama tank.
Yeah, I'm recommending, I'm recommending the 10,000.
From Alabama tank.
Because you're getting, you're getting It's a, it's a flame shield.
Flame shield.
Basically, what you're saying is on that flame shield, you're looking for the okay to bid, are we willing to spend $42,000 right now?
Plus the add-ons of 47,000.
Now. Before the City of Fairhope took over the Marina, just on the Fly Creek side, for 17, 2017 and 2018, they revenueed $26,208. Now that the City of Fairhope has taken over, they will have to renew their contracts next August in 2018, in which we will be raising the prices accordingly.
You propose to raise the prices?
Propose to raise the prices.
Yes, they'll go, they'll come to you for approval.
Since Fairhope docks has taken over, since October 15th through December, as of today, we're totaling $24,195.59. That's just in dockage fees, live boards, and transients. Now, if you look at those two numbers, those numbers are going to grow next year due to the fact that we're going to have a lot more loopers, transients, as well as you're going to have the other side of the Marina bringing in business, the shipyard portion of it.
You're saying, look at those numbers.
I'm, I'm not sorry, I'm not, I'm sorry, not look at those numbers, I have, I just have a
We have a cheat sheet.
No problem. Make sure I wasn't missing something.
No.
Your gas right now, as of 12/7, is $2.54 a gallon, and that's tax included, coming from the rep.
I ran, I ran the numbers
Yes.
I ran the numbers last Thursday when Drew got, got the quote. That day's price, wholesale price to us, and then that day's retail prices over at Dog River. We would have been, had we been in business, we would have been making in excess of 70 cents a gallon profit.
Counsel, any comments? I say put it out for bid, and we kind of know what the ballpark is. And I say, in my opinion is, you know, just, I take your suggestion of the bidding out to 10,000.
Okay.
I mean, you know, how do you, how do you, the trick is, how do you bid that out without, you know, specifically stating these people win it? I mean, I think that you got to be careful on that, because there may be somebody that has one less whistle, and it's $10,000. You know, one bell or whistle less, and it might save $10,000. I believe a little bit, a little bit of leeway in there, otherwise you're just writing a spec for these people to win.
We'll put out a I don't even know the word for it.
It needs to be competitive.
Right. We'll put out a bulleted list of what we'd like in a sized tank that we're looking at. See who can do it. I also want to, you know, assure you that, it's, Jack, you know, fuel is a big moneymaker in a Marina. And the sooner we get this going, sooner we get back a lot of business that we've lost. I've talked with the harbor master down at Point Clear, and he's loving us being out of business because their revenues have gone up exponentially. And we can get that back.
I think we will. So
I'm sorry. How watertight is this?
Very watertight.
That was going to be my question.
Yes.
If you go to these type tanks, do you still have to have the berm around the, or a catch basin for some kind of spill?
No, everything is automatically incorporated.
Okay, just put it on a pad?
Put it on a pad, and it comes, if you look at the page, the front page here, that's exactly what it'll look like. Now, we did discuss, Richard and I, Peterson, we discussed with the person today from Alabama Tank. And you can only go so high with those cradles due to environmental laws. But the pad will have hurricane straps. And all the compartments up top are watertight, as well as, you know, you do have breathing vents and stuff like that. But my recommendation, due to the fact with, especially with this technology and having tanks with the registers attached, is a lot more, it's a cleaner look. And then also having that ROM door that rolls up. And if you look at this, this drawing here, this is just kind of a rough drawing. These aren't exactly the full-blown specs. But your barbecue pit back here is basically an added safety feature for the person fueling these, which is cam locked, dual cam locked on both sides. For diesel and gas, they're basically, and it's lockable. Open it up and just cam lock it in and start filling. Opposed to filling from the top, which is the old style, which is, you know, you're talking about possible spills and whatever else that can come up, you know, that are basically, that are safety hazards. On the front portion of this, you've got, it's basically built on, and it sits up, so it'll actually sit up off of the dock itself. And it has a roll-up door. You'll have one register with dual hoses, two 50-foot reels inside. And the door rolls down and rolls up, which is completely environment waterproof as well. Unless, of course, you get a tidal surge, I mean, nothing's waterproof.
Counsel McConney, some questions?
No, no questions, other than timeframe.
You're looking at, for any of these tanks built, for a single tank like that, which is, they've got to build the tanks because they're not cookie cutters. You're looking at eight to 10 weeks build time.
So we need to get going to have it in for spring?
Yes.
Are these stanchions concrete or metal?
That's
I call them stanchions, I don't know what you're
That's, that's steel. It's steel. The only concrete that we'd have would be the concrete slab that we would pour.
Any other questions? Get it out for bid.
Okay.
Will do, tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Committee updates?
I'd say you had a, had a good meeting with the Environmental Board on Friday. Richard Peterson was there to discuss the water testing that we've been doing with Fly Creek and surrounding area. I'd say the Environmental Advisory Board's anxious to see the city take on some of the infrastructure improvements related to the sewer system. Next, I've got, the Library Board is scheduled to meet a week from today. That'd be Monday, the 18th. And the Chocolate and Champagne Party, that's their 10th annual. That is, tickets are on sale, and that event is January 27th. Which is, let's see, January 27th, I'll have to check the day of the week that is, but that's a Saturday night. It's 6:30 PM at the library. And that's it. Buy them at the library.
They're on sale to the general public today.
The water testing, if y'all can have Lynn talk about some of the details about the invoice and one of the problems we might face, so we can figure out how to deal with it. Do you mind?
Sure.
We got the first invoice from Mobil Baykeeper last week. And we run into a little bit of a problem. The invoice calls for a waived cost for the Grandman Triathlon for 2018 of $950. And that is based on last year's price. And they're holding in case it's raised again, they would take the additional raise. The problem we have is that the council passed ordinance 1486, in which the authority granted to the city council by the laws of the state of Alabama, it is hereby established that no waivers or reductions of fees for utility tap or connections or any activity, event, or function held at a city facility or on a city property shall be allowed. Shall be allowed. This in-kind is basically a waiver of a fee that Grandman would have to pay. So we're going to have problems paying this bill based on the fact that a fee was waived that according to ordinance 1486 is not permitted. So we need your help in figuring this out.
They included in the invoice a waiving of fees?
Yes, they did. And it is written as waived cost for Grandman Triathlons 2018. And I do have a little bit of a problem. I mean, I have no issues whatsoever with the Grandman and Baykeeper and what they're doing. But I do have a problem with the city waiving a fee for something that has 69 corporate sponsors.
Well, now, is that a waived fee on top of the in-kind? Because I know there was some discussion that in lieu of paying them 6,500, we would offset it based on the fees that we would be collecting for, for that event.
The fee that you would be collecting as of last year was $950.
Okay.
And that's what they waived. That's what they believed to be waived.
Paying them 950.
Right. That's still
Paying 950.
But we're not. It's, it's an in-kind, and this is where we might need some legal counsel on it, because we are, an in-kind can be viewed as waiving a fee. The bill is either the bill, or we're going to do something in-kind, we're giving them something. I mean, we have, state authority, we cannot, according to Section 94, cities are not allowed to lend its credit, which we're not, or to grant public money or a thing of value in aid or to any individual association or corporation whatsoever. We're giving them aid, we're giving them something of value, and that is a fee that we would have gotten for this event.
I think it's
And it doesn't
I think it was an attempt to probably be more efficient, but whether we pay them an extra 950 and then collect 950 from them for a fee.
I think it's just an internal accounting.
Six and one have dozen the other, right?
It's an internal accounting matter. And I would, I would also bring back to you, I mean, because the resolution exists, something needs to be done with the
We can absolutely waive fees. We've got on the agenda tonight to waive the fees for the golf course, for the feet tournament, which has been done forever.
Here's, here's your, this is the council's 1486. You need to take a look at it.
Yeah, we need to strengthen our rules and, you know, make our rules on that. We've been waiving them forever. That's not violating our own, you know, ordinance. If we are in fact the ones waiving the fee, since we make the rule, we can, we can waive a fee.
I'm not sure. I would feel personally, and I think our staff, you know, our staff goes crazy trying to put together these things for people, getting things done, and then going according to the ordinance that we have. And then turn around and have it turned upside down because of a waiving that we have an ordinance that says for any activity, event, or function held at city facility or on city property, cannot do it.
Can I see that, Lynn?
Sure.
I think if it's just an accounting issue, then
We can allow it if we want to.
I saw them do that seven, eight years ago.
But if it simplifies the accounting, I mean, just pay them the total amount and collectively.
Is there a state statute also?
There's, there's the Constitution. In Section 94, and then, then you get into what is the public purpose? That's the other issue.
Something that needs to be updated, if that's the case.
Yeah, something, something needs to be fixed, so we don't have staff running around chasing themselves, trying to do something that something tells them to do here and have the work that they've done turned upside down. And this is just something that, that just brought it up to be faced.
Yeah, I think for the purposes of that, what I would recommend, you know, looking at this, and obviously, it can be changed by a resolution, but as it exists today, I think the simplest way to do that is we pay them their 6,500, and they pay us the 950 for the Grandman, just so that there's no issue.
Keep it simple.
Right, but we could always say in consideration of, you know,
Right, right.
We can, like you said, we can, we could, if we wanted to, pass a resolution to say, in consideration of this plus this, which is a value of what they're charging us for the testing, they provide the testing services. That's commonly done. We did it in settling a lawsuit recently, in consideration of this plus this and in-kind services. I mean, it's, it's not uncommon. We do it to match grants.
In this case, if it's simpler accounting, just to have us pay them the full amount and then repay us and
We don't have to pass another resolution, we just
Okay.
But that invoice, you know, I
And that specifically states
I think they were just trying to keep it simple.
It could, and they don't understand what our vernacular is. In that light, I would plead once again that you take a look at allowing the City of Fairhope to do this work. I know that the mayor spoke to it at the last meeting, but I ran the numbers, and I have to tell you that their test is going to run 4514 per test, per 144 tests. Taking a look at the equipment that we have, granted, we need one more incubator, and it's been asked for in the new budget at a cost of $1,500. We can run the test, and if we couldn't, didn't have the incubator, let's start back. We didn't have an incubator. We have one, but it's at full capacity. If we didn't get a second one, we have the people who are already testing water. We're not incurring any more fees in employee costs or anything like that. We're already doing that. If we sent our, our samples out to test, we would be paying $35 per test versus 45. The incubator, if we did it in-house with a new incubator, it's going to cost us $7.50 to run each one of those tests. Now, they are doing an additional Brightner's test, which requires a fluorometer, which we do not have. But that runs about $1,000. So for $2,500, we can get the two pieces of equipment that we need. And if we had those two pieces of equipment for 144 tests, it would cost us $24.87 for each test. And that's amortizing the two new pieces of equipment only over the 144 tests, not for the duration of their lifetime.
144 tests? And how much time is required when they run the 144 tests?
Well, Baykeeper's talking about three months is what they were going to take to do it.
How many man hours are required? Because you got to factor the cost of labor in there, and then you love that labor. I mean, that's the argument we used to do the tree lighting.
Right, the same exact
It's the same argument being made, just
But we're not, see, we were taking employees away from normal tasks for the lighting.
So we have to do nothing that have time to go do the testing of the water.
We do have people, part of their job description is go and test the water. And they are testing waters, they're on a program that Richard Peterson has going for areas where there could be, not saying that there are, but they're testing in transmission, sewer transmission areas. There's no reason why they're out gathering waters, test there, they can't get samples elsewhere.
And how much is our test, I mean, how much is the charge per test to analyze? So 144 times to analyze each sample?
If you're doing it in-house straight with what we have? I mean, which, which level? 144 tests at 4514?
This is the in-house?
No, the in-house, real simple, down and dirty. Take the one incubator we have, take it offline from what it's doing, which I don't recommend. But we got one. It would be $7.50 per test.
As opposed to 4450?
Mm-hmm.
And $7 even?
$7.50.
Seven, I'm sorry, per test?
Mm-hmm.
If we do it.
Plus your labor and stuff, but it is something that we already do. The main thing I was trying to say when we The main thing I was trying to say when we start talking about day-to-day, please engage me, and then we can bring that department head that handles it, then we're not spending more money outside.
Sure, but how many... But we hired Mobile Baykeeper on a temporary and limited basis, did we not? I mean, they're not doing this forever.
Not three months.
It's limited short-term.
Twelve weeks, 12 sites.
And Mayor, I remember you saying in several meetings that Richard and his department would be doing water quality testing.
They were already doing it.
Yeah, but my assumption was, I mean, due to the fact that we've had multiple meetings where we've had mothers in here in tears, crying over the sewage in Fly Creek, why not do additional testing to get ahead of that and stay ahead of that? And if we can do it for $6,500, for peace of mind for that mother and those parents, why not do that?
It's a test, though, that we... All we're saying is we could have just do additional testing, and we have been doing it. We weren't waiting for them, anybody, to say what's happening. This had been in place and right when Richard Peterson started.
Absolutely, and I knew that, but Mobile Baykeeper's focus was going to be on the Fly Creek area, was it not?
Right, and we can do, for $6,500, the Fly Creek area. For $35.80, we can do the Fly Creek.
But that does factor in cost of labor.
But the labor is different from when... You can't compare it to the street lighting, because we're not taking the labor away from doing another job. This is a job we have labor doing. So, it's a matter, they're going out and taking samples here, they can take samples elsewhere.
I think you've got to count the hours, just like you would the streetlights, because otherwise, that's saying that they're just going to be doing this testing, then they're going to be sitting on the bench the rest of the day.
No, they have other work to do.
Right, right. So, you aren't taking them away from something. If you're going to use the argument for the streetlights, you've got to use it for that too.
And I think ultimately, what we're talking about is even best-case scenario, we're talking about 3,000 extra with Baykeeper already in the process of doing it and giving us some supplemental peace of mind to know that these people that have had these issues, the issues that have been heavily complained about, about water contamination, that we are staying in front of it as opposed to trying to catch up.
Then we have an independent, reputable organization.
The water contamination, let's back up a little bit more. You know, the second step of the sewer after we, you know, have received a brand-new sewer plant was to do the things that we have to do right now. That was in 2012. So, that second phase, that's why we're having the problems that we're having. It's not doing testing in these waters. This could have been resolved way back when, but that's in the budget now, even if you take it outside the budget. That second phase of the sewer has to take place. You can test it all you want, but we know and we've put together a way to fix it.
Sure.
So, that's what we should be doing.
Absolutely, and that should be part of the process also, but until it is fixed, we need, why not have an extra hand on deck to monitor while we're waiting?
I don't even think this should be an argument. I don't care for them to just continue doing it, and I'm all about supporting them even more with the Grandman, because it's a great event and it impacts Fair Hope in a very positive way. So, I want us to do more for Baykeepers. All of this aside, we're talking about a small amount of money, just reiterating that this can be done, because it's part of what we're already doing. That's it. The bigger problem is the reason why we're even testing this is because in 2012, it should have been the time that we started doing Phase Two. Okay? And we wouldn't be talking about this at all. So, we are going to start Phase Two, hopefully, in 2018, but this is where we are.
Well, if we go back that far, had we paid attention to the Auburn report that was done in 2012 and followed the recommendations, we wouldn't be where we are right now. We would have been doing this for some time.
I think the one issue that this may uncover outside of the improvements that need to be made is if there are any septic issues that are helping contribute to this problem along Fly Creek, and that very well may be. And it wouldn't take very many of them to cause an issue or to cause a spike in certain sections of the creek.
I'm just saying, this is part of day-to-day. This is day-to-day work.
Really, communication issue.
Yeah, absolutely. But it is day-to-day, and that is part of, you know, what the directors do.
It seems like we're talking about two different things. One is the cost of the function, and one is the testing itself. So, we're going to test no matter who does it. Is that correct?
This is something that we said we would add to.
The actual question is who does it? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so, if we do it, you're saying it costs $7.50 a test?
Mm-hmm, if we do it in-house.
If we do it in-house, $7.50.
But that shuts down the one incubator that we already have.
The one incubator, but we've asked...
We can buy another one.
Yeah.
Or you could buy another one.
At which point in time?
Oh, we paid Mobile Baykeepers $44.15 per test.
Uh-huh.
Is that correct?
At no point in time, even adding in labor, are we going to approach the cost?
I don't worry about labor.
I'm not either, Kevin, because it's already there. I'm sorry.
That discrepancy is a pretty good discrepancy as far as... You're looking at a total cost of 144 tests, is that correct?
Right.
If we do it, it costs $1,080, and if they do it, it costs $6,357.
And if we do it...
No, not $1,080. You've still got to buy the equipment.
No.
Well, hang on, I'm getting to that.
But the equipment lasts beyond these samples.
Let's put $2,500 in that, we bought the equipment.
Uh-huh.
Now, you're looking at $3,580 as opposed to $6,357.
That's my point.
But that cost will go further than those tests.
That's right.
If you do it for half the cost, what's the problem?
And that's amortizing that equipment over only 144 tests. I mean, the tests go down and costs, the more you...
But Kevin, you're also losing an independent third-party review of your water source.
Now, that, if that's what everybody wanted to spend...
If you're doing a third-party, then why not do...
You want an independent, that's fine. That was my first thought when this brought up, is now we're going back to the city doing...
The city never did it before we hired Richard Peterson.
I can certainly understand that.
The city should always do this. I mean, we should continue to monitor this.
It never happened before we hired Richard Peterson.
You say the city, it should be done, no matter who does it.
Look, we've got to stop talking about 2012. This is 2017. We've got to focus on what we're doing now and what should be done today.
Correct.
We're doing it now, we should continue doing it now. As we've hired somebody, a reputable third-party company, to come in and double-check this, and as of now, they're looking at areas that we weren't looking at before and doing tests that we weren't doing before. I don't understand what the issue with that is.
There is no issue, but know that what we're doing with sewer and what we did with the sewer study is going to fix those problems, but we have to get a budget, and we have to pass it, and we have to start it. So, you can wait on these samples all you want, but we have the fix. It's a fix that should have started in 2012. You can say, let's not worry about 2012, but you can't forget what was done. We don't want to repeat that.
But I can't stop what happened in 2012. I can only fix...
But we can say, we've waited since 2012, it's time to get busy.
There is no we. I was not sitting here in 2012.
No, but we're sitting here now.
We the city.
We've been talking about this since early 2017.
So, unless we come back with a resolution waiving those fees, they need to pay, they need to charge us, we need to pay them with a check for those tests.
Let's just do that, keep the counting simple. We pay them the full amount, and they pay us back for the Grandman.
Right, okay. And there's no question. It was done right.
I believe it'd be taken a lot better with a third party, as I call a third party.
I agree for that, but we can continue doing it. I mean, it's not a problem. I don't have a problem with getting the kits and continuing that and as a part of day-to-day operations. What I'm kind of hoping also is that we will learn a little something from what they did, and we can build on that, you know? But just having a third party to start off, nobody's going to question what the city was doing. Hopefully, they'll be happy with that, and we can learn from them and build on it.
And we can carry on into the future at our own costs.
Possibly. Well, we may find out that we can't. I mean, I'm still not convinced that labor's that cheap. I mean, you know, labor's not that cheap when you put the loaded cost of the labor in there for 144 tests. I mean, is it a 20-minute test, or is it an hour? I mean, how long does a test take? If it's an hour, that's 144 loaded hours of labor. That's not $7.50.
That'll take an hour.
I think we can get that, but I do want to say that this wasn't about, in the beginning, getting a third party. It was just about communication. And the fact that we've only been testing since, you know, Richard Peterson, you know, that's... There's nothing he's bringing to the table except exact facts. You know, that's not going to need to be verified by a third party. He's been doing it, we're going to continue to do it, because it's a part of what we need to do as a city.
When did Richard start here?
In March. I think it was in March.
Yeah, March, April.
March or April.
All right. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
All right, department heads. Chief, Patterson, you got anything?
As most of y'all, well, everybody should know, tomorrow, we're going to have a large turnout for the election. We have two election sites here in our jurisdiction, here at the civic center and then out at the church, and they're expecting quite a few people to come out for it, and so, we're going to be ready for that, and we're getting ready for New Year's Eve. If the weather's great, we'll probably have a large turnout for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Sherri Lee? You have your report?
That was mighty nice and very volunteering.
I noticed that.
[laughing].
Counsel, just a couple of things, more than a couple, just kind of to give you heads up. We do have an opportunity for a recreational trails grant program. We're going to follow the procedure to the letter since we have the luxury of time here. That application would be due in the middle of February of 2018, so we are going to discuss it in general terms, the economics of it with the finance committee this week, and hope to at least get some affirmative recommendation from them and possibly request for us to discuss it in detail with you on the work session on December 18th, or at least the first work session in January. Just things that are in the works, you're discussing the resolution for the TAP grant, and I know this has kind of been a quick turnaround on it, but we have the application ready to go. It has to be in Montgomery by 5:00 on this Friday. Y'all are considering the second read on the solid waste fee increase this evening. We've already kind of in advance been working with the meter and billing, so that if it is an affirmative action from you, that we will be able to cycle through and have that ready for the January billing cycle. A couple of things, just to introduce the concept, and I'm learning kind of the precedents and the way that things have been done in the past here in Fair Hope. We have an opportunity, I look at it as an opportunity. There is an existing drainage system that's, let's just say, kind of to the east of downtown that is historically known to be woefully undersized and not in the best of shape, and there is a development that is containing this drainage area, and I would like to hopefully have some numbers and some things of that nature to sit down and discuss with you at a work session in the future about a private-public partnership, where maybe the city would consider providing materials and the developer and his contractor would do the construction to bring that up to a capacity and modern material to solve a drainage problem that not only solves a lot of the issues in the city for drainage in that location, but also benefits the development that's coming in the future, since it would be subject to the flooding due to the inadequacy of that drainage. I like these type of things, because you get a lot of problems solved and you get a good value for that. And then, the other thing I just want to share with you, Mayor has challenged department heads to start putting together strategic goals and discussing those, and I've kind of been making some of those for myself. It's going to take input from all of our elected officials, but just kind of, the short list is, is one, we discuss sidewalks a great deal, and they're very important to our citizens, they're very important to our elected officials, and one of my goals is, in the short order in FY 2018, or at least in calendar 2018, is to be able to take all the data that we have, produce a GIS sidewalk inventory, so that we can set a map before you and show you where our network is, and we can start looking and identifying missing links and things like that, and get feedback as these opportunities for grants and things come forward that we've at least prioritized where we want to go next. I'm a fan of sidewalks, but I'm not going to politic for one over another. I just want to know what the batting order is, so that we can kind of attack those. On another thing, same thing with roadways, not as pressing, our roads overall, and Fair Hope are in pretty good shape. There's some areas that need some maintenance and some resurfacing, but also be able to visually inspect every road segment, have it evaluated based upon condition, and then have that part of a graphical GIS map, so that we can click on any road, know when it was inspected, what its score was as far as condition, and start looking strategically, all right, we feel this road probably is going to be due to be repaid in 12 years, 10 years, so that also we're starting to build that strategic list there. Something that the mayor's worked very hard on, that we're taking and running with, and that is fleet management, fleet inventory, getting a complete handle on that. As you know, we're going through a learning curve and process with Munis. Munis has a work order system that is completely integrated for fleet management, and so, when we go live in June, all of a sudden, we will start having a true database of every piece of equipment, and every time a hand touches it to repair it or maintain it, that cost is being recorded, including capturing the labor time and everything else, but we're trying to make sure that when we go live, we've got a real clean, and we know what we have, who has it, what kind of condition it is, and that type of thing. And then drainage, probably the number-one thing that I have been fielding as your public works director is citizens who have a persistent drainage issue, and some of them are pretty easy to solve, some of them are not easy to solve, but to start developing that database, that kind of hotspot listing, and then start to go through, and yeah, this is a city issue, or no, this is a private development issue, and really start getting those and addressing that. And then probably one other little thing, and that's something I'm going to have to talk with Lisa about, is our road acceptance procedure. I know that, for example, with the new roundabout that opened at Gayford in '13, I think the county has filed a quick claim deed to the city, a good portion of that approaches to that new roundabout, but I don't know if that has been brought to you as a council to formally accept that road. And as I understand it, just like only you can vacate a right-of-way, only you can say, this is now a city right-of-way, and public works and such are authorized to do maintenance. So, I do want to make sure we're following the procedures, so everybody knows when something stops being a county road, or stops being a private developers' road, and starts becoming a city of Fair Hope Public Road. And so, that's kind of my list there, and I want to challenge all of you, and the mayor's already given me things that she wants on that list, but if there are things that you as city council member that are public works-related, want metrics and things on, and then probably lastly, is solid waste operation. That's going to, this is going to be, 2018 is going to be the year of solid waste. I want to be able to time that we sit down next year, that we can show you metrics, show you what we're doing, show you where we're improving, you know, because ultimately, we've got to be as efficient and customer-service oriented as we can be, and I tell you, Dale is, man, he lives it. He gets excited about it, and that kind of energy is infectious, and we're just going to, we're going to get a plan, and we're going to just be the best solid waste operation you've seen, and it's going to be cost-effective and efficient as well. But that's kind of public works and kind of looking into the future, because I finally feel like I've at least got my feet on the ground and have at least got uncovered a little bit. So, any questions?
Questions for Richard?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I haven't taken my coat off since Friday, so just living in it. I haven't seen y'all since the Christmas parade went very well. As you know, you were all in it. Few things. A lot of the things Richard talked about are things that we're working on together, a lot of the grant projects, and then you heard him talk about the public-private partnership, and I think, Kevin, you actually walked by today when we were all in Wayne's office and working together, and that's...
And what did I do?
You walked by.
Yeah.
I saw you. We were in there working on a public-private partnership. You saw it.
And what else did I do?
What else did I do?
First hand, you said hi. You said Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
All right. See? I remember, I was listening. Gosh, phew, I remembered. So, you know, that was a great example of the kind of work that we would do in the design studio setting to where we come together with economic development, our public utilities, planning, public works, and all work together with a developer on a project, especially one that's bringing a lot of sales tax revenue to the city. So it was, it was a good practice, and I think it went really well, and Richard talked a little bit more about the details, and more will unfold over time. And then mayor and Robert Brown attended, we had the South Fairhope Community Action Plan Meeting at the Rotary Youth Club. The Gulf Coast Community Design Studio will make a report out to the council and mayor in January, a formal report of all their findings. It's gone very well. They had somewhere between 25 and 30% response rate to a survey that they did door-to-door with all the citizens in the area that we're looking at, and their findings were pretty interesting. I'm not going to get into the details because they were really preliminary, they just wanted to give some feedback quickly, but in January, you'll get more details and then we'll go from there. We'll have a game plan, or we'll develop a game plan, I should say. So mayor's going to talk about something at the rec center later, and we'll let her talk about that, but the other thing that's kind of new is the Trailblazers have a grant program over, they got a grant from the National Realtors Association for the library where the kids line up for the walking school bus, and they asked me to come out with a couple of other people and look at that, what they wanted to do there, and it turns out, there's a lot more that they need to do there, so we're trying to figure out now how we can partner with them on a larger project. That side parking lot between our beautiful new parking lot and the library itself is just, it's kind of a mess, and it needs to be cleaned up, and like I said, you have 150 school kids running around there in the mornings with parents and teachers, and when it rains, it gets like a big mud puddle, and there's nowhere for people to sit, and it's just kind of disjointed, and certainly not the approach we want for people from the parking lot coming to the library or for people to have a quiet space to sit. So it has great potential to be a little pocket park or something, so we'll see how that moves forward. We're cobbling together different funding sources right now that different people have, library, Trailblazers, so nothing is solid yet, but I wanted to let you know that it was happening, and that's it for me for now.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Want to mention one project we're working on. We are going to start conducting a parking survey for downtown. We'll be taking the CBD area and then GPS-ing each parking location, whether it's parallel parking or angled parking, and also on-street, off-street parking, and also service-level parking, so we get a total parking count for the whole CBD, and then we're going to start looking at the buildings and the uses and square footages and applying some parking ratios to those and see where we stand with total parking compared to what the demand would be per our zoning warrants, for example. And so we're going to be looking at that and trying to figure out, do we have a parking deficit or oversupply or where it's located and so forth? And then the next phase would be monitoring the parking at different times of the day over a period of six months or so, so we see where the highest vacancies are as far as the time of day and how much turnover we have in parking. So just trying to get some data and some statistics on that so we can better understand exactly what we have and where any issues may be, and it will help us plan for the future, especially when we look at construction in CBD and things like that, so just want to make you aware of that.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne.
I have a feeling we're not going to be, have over parking spots, but I could be wrong.
Surplus.
A surplus.
I apologize about all the sewer issues. I don't mean it to become a problem for anybody. We do have work to do and we hope to be able to get to do that, but I think there's a lot of issues that we can improve on in managing some of these systems and maybe we can work together to do that. A couple of things I'm working on right now, and I, BES engineers came to the mayor's office about some issues with mapping and then some architectural services. One thing that's been on the back burner unfortunately for me has been the rec center, the soffit of the rec center where the pool is, and so they had some involvement in the initial planning of that building, and so we're trying to break it down into two phases. One phase is the soffit repair, which I think is something we need to do now. The other phase is the, is the internal climate control of that building where the moisture just coming from the swimming pool itself, you know, has potential to cause problems with the structural steel elements of the building that are exposed. We have painted them one time before and it's not critical, but there's also moisture, there was some dehumidification equipment installed for the bathroom areas, and I think that's been out of service for quite some time. So one of the issues they have is climate control for the building, and that includes the heat of the summer when people are there for swim meets and trying to, it can be sweltering in there from what I understand according to time, and then during the winter, you know, it can obviously get cold and you're supposed to keep the air temperature a little warmer than the pool water just for the convenience of the swimmers. So that project has turned out from what the proposal looks to be, a pretty significant project, and I think at some point in time, we'd like to put our heads together and decide what our goals are for that part of the building, the climate control part. But we do want to work on the soffit and get it done pretty quickly, so we may be doing something in the near future to get some services from BES to get that accomplished. It seems reasonable to me that that works out to our benefit to get that done. We are, I appreciate the input on the fuel at the marina. We're going to work with the bidding process like you suggested, and then we'll look at the loading on the tanks and provide the foundation in-house, so it'll be kind of a force account project where it'll be a public works project, but we'll do in-house and buy the equipment we need and have it installed that way. And the last thing is, we've got Volker who did the original mapping of the wastewater system back in 2002 in anticipation of the second year of the cleaning inspection and pipeline and contract that we, we'll start the first year. What we'd like to do is attach each of those videos to a line segment and prepare our mapping for an eventual GIS-based map that we'll be able to utilize as we continue to assess and maintain the system, and so there'll be also a proposal that we're looking at to improve the mapping capability so that we can start managing that system in-house. I'm still looking for some extra capability, you know, in terms of mapping and in terms of improving the SCADA system, but that's part of what this next year's budget may allow for, may not, but you know, that's part of our goal is to move along with what we have to now with hiring services to get those things done, but eventually, we'd like to migrate into where we're able to accomplish those tasks ourselves. So that's where we are with all that. The tank, we had a pre-construction meeting and we submitted, they returned some middles to us and we forwarded those back, so they should be bringing tractors and equipment on-site to start erecting the containment system. That's the first stage of it, just coming along.
About January?
Yeah. I hate Auburn couldn't take Georgia in the championship game, but they were worn out. Anybody, any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment for you, is I would like to get with you this week and try to come up with that strategic plan for paying for those substation upgrades. I know that you had requested that engineering be put on tonight's agenda, and I really wanted to, wanted to leave it on there, but I didn't want to get the cart before the horse.
Right, I understand.
I promised to spend some time with you this week, and it may not take us long to do that, but to come up with this, how we're.
Are you going to the AMEA board meeting Thursday?
I'm going to be there Thursday. You want to ride together?
We can, sure.
All right, let's do that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that we completed installing the LED lighting project at the clay courts, at the tennis court, so go swing a racket, knock it out.
I'll be right there. Two bad knees.
Eric? Why didn't you see you back there, chief? You just, you just wake up?
Just kind of the normal stuff going on, very, very busy. I will let you know that they are starting final inspections and partial, or a lot of the units in the Old Battles Place apartment complex, they're going to start occupying those. I know we've got a bunch of final inspections scheduled for tomorrow and more coming, so they'll start, they've already finished up the first half of Phase 1, they've got it sotted, they've got it cleaned up, so we're going to get those units cleared and start getting them occupied. I think Mr. Johnson told me they delivered a bunch of trashcans out there, so since that's in the city, we're going to service all that, and I know Dan said he set, I think he said 70 water meters out there? So that's going on, and I will come before you at the next meeting, I'm going to get with Lisa. A few months back, or I think it was like August, I had requested that you appropriate or allow me to spend up to $40,000 with the International Code Council on plan reviews. So far, we've got, I'm receiving the reviews on the W block, which is the worship, the sanctuary at Three Circles Church. They also have what they're calling the E block, where they're adding a second floor structurally to their education building. Both of those are in Birmingham. We've received back First Baptist Church plans, we've received back a mixed use here in downtown, we've received back the Grand Hotel, and there's one other one that I'm not thinking of, one of the big projects. So we have received all that money back, or we will when we issue the permits. I've got a couple of major projects that I expect to receive in January, and I desperately want to send those to Birmingham and let them look at them. So I'll be coming before you at the, probably at the next council meeting, asking for a resolution to let me appropriate some more money since I've been through that 40, but, and I've gotten it back, I think the proper procedure would be to request another amount and let me continue on with that. Thank you.
Chief Ellis, you have anything? Jill, do you have anything? Tuck, you have anything from the legal department?
No.
Short timer, I should call you. Anything else? All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session, move into the agenda meeting real quick.
So Mr. Johnson on number five, if we have any questions, we'll call on you for that. I think that's pretty straightforward now. Jennifer, I think we got clarification on number six, the business license codes, and we had had a question about the, I believe, the interest rates. We weren't happy with how high it was, but I think we clarified that that's state statute, that that's not an either-or and we can't lower it if we don't like it, and that the final answer on that? And I believe that we've had Councilman Robinson actually discuss that as well, so. But Jennifer, if we need you, I guess, I'll call on you there. Who's going to speak to item seven? This was in ordinance, making all traffic offenses crimes against the City of Fairhope. Tuck or Marcus, could you speak to that? I think this was a request by our municipal judge to change this.
We can actually do, all it is, I believe, is just joining the two ordinances that we previously had together, just an update.
Wasn't it to, wasn't it to make sure that we were collecting the right fees and everything? Yeah. I think it was just making sure that our fee collection and fees charged matched up with the law said.
Okay. All right, item eight, self-explanatory. Number nine, that TAP grant, would that be you, Sherri Lee, you or Wayne or Richard? Okay, Doc's Marina Boatyard, that's pretty self-explanatory, but I'm going to assume Lynn or Drew can talk to that. Item 11, the beverage concessions for the rec department, would that be Tom?
Yeah.
The multiple piers repair project would be, okay. The calendars, who would that be? Sherri Lee or Mayor? IT, is Jeff here? Is he in the back room if we need to ask him about the Microsoft? That's pretty self-explanatory.
He used to be able to like, kind of, cause Oz overheads.
I know. You'd think he could do that. Okay, I think 15, would that be Richard Johnson? 26, would that be Lynn? Pay grade job classification for the director of golf? We can cover the supplemental pay, I can cover that. Okay, oh no, 18 on the calendars?
They're the same thing. It's the total is under, it's the 4440. That's the total.
Can you speak to that, Mayor? I want to get some clarification. Let's wait till then, but just when we get to it, maybe on that first one, tie that all in together. I have a couple of questions about that.
Well, it's 4440 total. The city already budgeted 2,500. Okay, so the difference is, I think, 2,450. Oh, okay. So that's a, okay, so is that number 13? Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and then items 19 through 29 are all community development appropriations passed in that portion of the budget. 30, I can handle that if I need to. 31 is really an appropriation as well with the community development, waiving the fees. And then 32, I can cover that or maybe in conjunction with Sherri Lee or you, Lisa, if I need to. That's it. Any questions? Let's go ahead and adjourn and be back in about 15 minutes. Should I get ready for the meeting?